Hello, my name is Kedar and you're watching RPTV. The parcel of land at 214-230 Sherburne Street, encompassing seven lots in Toronto's downtown east, stands as a potential site for urgently needed affordable social housing. However, in 2022, Kingset Capital, a prominent private equity real estate firm, outbid the city of Toronto to secure the land, intending to construct a 47-storey luxury condominium. This decision has ignited public outrage, primarily because it will introduce high-end housing in one of Canada's most impoverished neighborhoods, exacerbating gentrification and worsening the housing crisis. Kingset plans to rezone the area for profit have raised alarm among local residents. Protests have erupted with many fearing that Kingset will flip the property, selling it quickly for a profit after making minor improvements. Recent speeches at the mayor's office underscored the urgency of the situation as community members rallied to persuade city officials to reconsider their approval of Kingset project. The controversy surrounding this development highlights the ongoing struggle for affordable housing in a city grappling with deep economic disparities.
We need all of these things and we need them now. We've been waiting years and years and years. Now is now is now. Today, there will be a decision to back Kingset. The people of this city cannot back Kingset. Maybe the mayor may play a little footsie with them, but she better back away. Thank you.
Thank you, Kedar. Good morning, everyone. I want to thank my good friends John Park and Kedar for speaking about Kingset. We all know Kingset met with members of council 39 times. We all know that the mayor's office, the mayor's staff met with John Bear on behalf of Kingset. And we know that this company uses horrible business practices that speculate the lands that are meant for development of social housing. I want to remind members of the public that in 2019, city council approved a motion that came from the Planning and Housing Committee that designated 214 and 230 Sherburne as a site for social housing and potentially supportive housing. The residents of Sherburne and Dundas, the many residents living in our campus, the many residents that are on the waiting list deserve respect from this mayor, deserve respect from this council. I hope that they will listen to the hundreds of thousands of residents who are paying attention to this topic, whether it's over social media or whether it's through coverage by amazing media outlets. I hope they do the right thing and vote against this motion to approve the staff recommendation of rezoning the 214 and 230 Sherburne site. It is critically important that we take a stand this week at city council against irresponsible developments, against greedy developers, and instead in favor of the residents of Toronto who've been waiting for too long, for too damn long for social housing and supportive housing in our city. I want to conclude by saying that if developers want to be part of the solution, they need to take steps to work with our city, specifically our elected representatives, to create rent geared-to-income housing, not for-profit market housing that displaces so many of our friends, neighbors, and family members. Today is an important milestone. Today is an important day in what an affordable and livable city could look like. So please get in contact with your city councillor and most importantly, call Mayor Olivia Chow and hold her office accountable for the vote that will take place tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, on whether 214 and 230 Sherburne will be a site for social housing, an affordable rent geared-to-income housing, just like the 2019 motion intended. Thank you for being here and I appreciate all of your support.
Hello, my name is Sophia. I live in Regent Park and I am a member of the Toronto Underhoused and Homeless Union. After experiencing a health crisis many years ago, I needed to learn to walk and speak all over again. It was a scary time and I overcame it with many obstacles during those years. As a mom of a young son, finding housing in an area where we both have supports we need to thrive was vital to our well-being. Luckily, I secured TCH housing in Regent Park. My son lives a good life and as a mom who can be present, he goes to a good school and he's also well-cared for. I too have access to the sports and healthcare that I need, close to my home because of the stability I have here. Me and my son can thrive together. And for years now, I am a support person to many in the neighborhood. I volunteer four times a week at the corner of Sherburne and Dundas. I'm regularly at the Margaret's, All Saints, and also at the Sherburne Health. I lead a women's beating group and help on a variety of women's programs and community meals. And let me tell you, having housing at this corner is not just a nice idea. It is extremely critical to the survival of the women I know and support. This has long been a neighborhood where people who might be outcasted or welcomed and receive necessary services they need. My friends at Dundas and Sherburne are already rooted in that community. They need housing and they also need friends in the area to help them to stabilize and thrive. I want them to be able to experience what I have experienced myself. They're humans worthy of dignity and care, just like you and me. I should be hosting housewarming parties for women I am friends with at Sherburne and Dundas, but instead I am going to funerals. We must see social housing at 230 Sherburne Street. Not having housing is killing good, beautiful, and caring people who deserve to live, just like you and me.
Developers run this city. That's hardly news, especially since Premier Doug Ford made it clear who he serves. We all know how he neutered municipal planners in favor of developers. Less obvious is how developers are effectively buying their way through the safeguards we have in the form of official plans and zoning laws. Regardless, Mayor Olivia Chow, councillors and city planners have aggravated their responsibility to do the right thing. In the face of developer money or threat of the Ontario Land Tribunal, they shrug their shoulders and roll over. Developers such as Kingset and Fitzrovia, which is bankrolled by public money from Alberta and owns the building I live in, they're given free rein to extract money from our city while giving crumbs back. Developers are not building our city. They're sucking money out and they're leaving brokenness behind. In this case, they want to build luxury condominiums, upscale apartments, rents to match on Sherburne in downtown east. It's a neighborhood, as we know, where basic housing is being shut down and rents are rising at an alarming rate and councillors wring their hands. It's unconscionable that developers, unimpeded by the planners or council, are allowed to extract as much wealth as they can from this city and its residents, no matter what the social cost. And we know what that social cost is. Growing number of tents and encampments in the shadow luxury condos and luxury apartments, the misery of unhoused and underhoused persons behind a wall of money and political indifference. Another slice of the population looking at those rising rents and wondering if they're at the edge of affordability and wondering if they're the next wave of homelessness. This is not the city or the province or the country we want. We urge Mayor Chow, the progressive mayor and council we elected, to do the right thing, insist on a planning and planning that will see 214-230 Sherburne in city hands, providing housing that will give citizens a chance to reclaim their lives.
My name is Maurice Adongo. Street Health is right at Dundas and Sherburne. It's the headquarters of homelessness. Every day you go to work, people are lying there. That's exactly where you left them when you were going home the other day. You find them exactly there. They have something on their cover, on their head. They're just covering themselves with a jacket. That's all they got. A few weeks ago, I think a month or so, I was given a referral of a woman who is in her 50s and who is severely disabled, who is on a wheelchair. And they told me this woman has lost her ODSB because she doesn't have ID. And because Street Health gives ID, I was told, Maurice, if you can go look for this person, take her to get ID, then you take her to the ODSB and she gets her money back. So I asked, oh, where can I get her? I was told she lives in the streets. So I've been walking up and down on Sherburne, on Dundas. I go to places where she goes. Sometimes I told her, oh, she was here. But now what I fear the most is that sooner than later, I'm going to get a call from the Coroners office. And you know what that means. The last call I got was about a month and a half and it was lived to the community support workers at the front desk at Street Health. And they told them, ask Maurice to call the Coroners office. So I called, I found the name of the person and they told me they are going to bury this person and they wanted to know if I know a relative. I knew his sister and we looked and we couldn't carry it. So that's it. Now that's why I say homelessness is a crime against humanity. Because the place that Olivia Chow wants to send them is the Coroners. That's their home. So Olivia Chow and the council is telling them, stop complaining. The Coroners will deal with you. They will call somebody. They does not accept it. Now as for the Kingset thing, Kingset, after we went there many times and met even the big ones, said to handle this. They gave it back to Olivia Chow, the council. They say, take it and build those homeless things. Olivia Chow is now telling them, oh, please, we don't want to build homeless houses for homeless people. Just take it back and build those big condos. You know what's going to happen? We're going to be picking dead people in front of those condominiums. And Olivia Chow is saying, that's fine. That's your job. Pick up the dead bodies. What do you want to do? Now the other thing that we did that we have to ask is giving back this property to this big company to build their towers and condos. What message does that tell us about the priorities of Mayor Olivia? The terrorities of the council and the priorities of our politicians? That's a big problem. And there is, Olivia Chow, we know. And one of the things is that they're doing a big damage. The one that campaigned about housing, the one that talks about human dignity, that's not the one here. This is a difference. That tells everybody. So there are a couple of things that I want Olivia Chow to reflect on tonight before they vote. One, the damage she is doing homeless people for the next decade. Because once you make this move, this guy will do his thing. They are telling us, forget it. You're not doing the soaps. I want her to just reflect a bit on that before she cast that vote. I also want her to reflect on the damage that she and the council are doing to the city of Toronto, which is becoming a place of permanent homelessness. Homelessness should be a crisis. You cannot just build a city where you say, yeah, that's okay. That's normal. They're dying there. That's a problem. The last thing I want Olivia Chow to do and reflect is on her reputation and dignity as a human being, as a councillor, as a politician. Just think about, what do I look like? What image do I give them? Also, Olivia Chow should reflect on her history of the politician which has lasted, you know, for a generation. What image? What is the history? And you want to just trash that because of some rich Kingset guy? And lastly, I would like Olivia Chow to think about her political future. One thing is guaranteed. You will never come up and talk about, oh, housing, housing. No, that's gone. What is that worth? So if she can reflect on all those things and still say, you know what? I'm giving this thing to Kingset. It's not worth it now. And that, you will find out eventually. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming. I'm going to talk more specifically about two points. First of all, I'm going to start with something a bit more personal. So I actually live in a rent-controlled, purpose-built, perfectly sound building that has been bought by Kingset Capital and they got their approval to rezone or upzone, which increases the land value. And three months later, my building got put up for sale. And what does this mean? This is a tactic that's often used by developers such as Kingset Capital who are more asset management companies rather than actual development. They're in the business of making money. They're not in the business of actually providing housing. So what they do is that they apply, they put a redevelopment application, they apply to rezone it. And then once a lot of land can have a taller building on it, the value of the land increases. And then they resell it and they make millions of dollars with barely any effort. It's maximum profits from minimum work. That's who we're talking about. And we have every reason to believe that even if they don't build a luxury condo on this site, they're just going to do this anyways. They're going to flip the land. They're going to sell it to another developer and this other developer is going to build a luxury condo. So it's really not a solution. And this is a practice that needs to stop because this is what is increasing the housing affordability crisis. This land speculation, it does not have any service at all to the general public, which is who, the voices that really shouldn't matter in this discussion. The next thing I want to talk about as a member of No Dumb Addictions is that we often hear things like, oh, about trickle-down economics, supply and demand. So let's talk about that a little bit. First of all, trickle-down economics, we have seen time and time again that in Canada and in Toronto, it doesn't actually work. And most importantly, without going into too many of the details of it, trickle-down economics is something that actually takes over a generation to actually work. So if you're trying to force it through, it actually becomes more of a violent act as we are. The next thing is this whole idea of supply and demand. Well, if we build more supply, all of the prices will go down. But that is actually the opposite of what we are seeing. Because anybody, investors or anyone who has bought a piece of property, they're not going to sell at a loss. They would be more interested in hoarding housing and keeping it empty until they can actually make a profit out of it. So the real solution to both of these problems is actual social housing. And we need to look more at supply and demand and the idea that if the demand is for affordable housing, then we need to build, supply affordable housing. If the demand is for social rent geared-to-income housing, we need to supply that to the people. And lastly, we hear a lot about this talk of developers are the ones who are bringing progress to the city. They're the ones who are cleaning our streets. Well, if for-profit housing is the only thing that we are moving forward with, if we are not building social housing, what happens when building housing is no longer profitable to them? Are we just going to stop building housing? So that's why social housing is really required as part of the overall solution. So I really hope that the mayor and the city council will realize that this site is so important because if they say yes to cleaning up, and by the way, when people say cleaning up, they're talking about unhoused and underhoused people as the trash that needs to be cleaned up. I invite people instead to think about cleaning up as in doing it on a socially responsible level. If you don't want people sleeping in the streets, give them housing. If you want to help people who are battling addiction, provide safety injection sites, provide more help to those who are trying to overcome their addiction. This is the way that we should be cleaning up, not by forcing people out that we don't think are desirable.
My name is Greg Cook and I'm an outreach worker. I've been dropping an outreach worker in the downtown east for over 17 years. I'm also on the steering committee of Shelter and Housing Justice Network. In my work, I have seen the deaths of far too many people who don't have housing. Just this past week, someone was found dead on the steps of All Saints at the intersection of Sherburne and Dundas. We will be remembering them today at 12 noon at the Toronto Homeless Memorial. On September 4th of this year, City Hall, the mayor Olivia Chow, started a public education campaign titled "Toronto for All." In the press release, the mayor is quoted as saying, "Toronto is a city for everyone, a place where everyone belongs, regardless of what they look like, who they love, or the language they speak." I want to thank the Toronto for All Community Advisory Council for putting together this new campaign that encourages us all to speak up, support each other, and strengthen our common bonds. Quote from Olivia Chow. The press release goes on to state the following. "Applying compassion in daily interaction, prioritizing inclusion, amplifying unheard voices so that those with important things to say get heard." This is really great to hear. The mayor says they believe in a city for everyone, that she is prioritizing inclusion. Yet, when I look at the situation on the ground and the funding and policy decisions that her office keeps making, the rhetoric just doesn't hold up. People living in tents are regularly displaced in this city. In August, 233 people on average called for a shelter and were told there was nothing available. 233 on average every single day. Most people I work with have given up calling. It's just a waste of time. City planners are in lockstep with developers. Huge swaths of publicly owned land continue to be sold out to private developers in places like Regent Park, Lawrence Heights, and Alexandra Park so that developers can make massive profits. City parks and gentrifying neighborhoods are receiving millions of public dollars in an effort to bolster nearby property values that price out thousands of tenants. The rich continue to get state help while hundreds of thousands of poor Torontonians are abandoned to lives of hunger, financial precarity, and crisis. A report from Policy Option States, research at the University of British Columbia found that 20% of Canadian households cannot afford housing costs, including utilities greater than $1,050 per month, while an additional 20% cannot pay more than $1,600 per month. About 20% of people who live in Toronto are considered in core housing need. The waitlist for rent geared-to-income housing is about 90,000 households. Evictions are happening at an unprecedented rate. If the mayor and city councillors greenlight housing that categorically excludes Torontonians in the hundreds of thousands, greenlighting luxury developments that utilize housing units as assets to be speculated on is business as usual in the offices behind me. This is true across the city of Toronto. It is especially devastating in neighborhoods like Sherburne and Dundas, that have historically been working-class neighborhoods, places where a large percentage of people are black, indigenous, brown, places where people who are of social assistance, Ontario Works and Ontario Disability Support Pension live. The city's decision to greenlight developments in this neighborhood means mass evictions for people with disabilities, for people who are racialized. They ensure that people who are poor are excluded from neighborhoods after neighborhood. A provincial report recently found in Ontario, the number of people who are unhoused and receive social assistance has doubled, doubled in the last two years. Two years ago, the number was 14,500 in the city, in the province of Ontario. It is now over 26,500. Decisions to allow greedy developers like Kingset to build condos or luxury rental buildings in neighborhoods like Sherburne and Dundas drive the mass displacement of disabled people. I guarantee you that the monthly rental costs or mortgage costs of units that Kingset plans to build are not less than $1,600. The decision for the mayor to not acquire 230 Sherburne is an act of exclusion. She has chosen to ignore the voices of the poor people. She has decided to facilitate profits for developers and the rich rather than build a city for everyone. Today, SHJN stands in solidarity with 230 Fight Back in demanding that Olivia Chow and city council change course, that they make sure to build housing for all. We are demanding that City Hall actually do the work of building a city for all.
You have to understand today that these speakers who have come to speak in front of the mayor's office are intimately connected to the city of Sherburne. Some of us for decades have watched people die on the streets. We were here when Doug Ford was mayor. We were here when Tory was mayor when people died on the streets. And now, given what council is going to do tomorrow, are we going to be coming back here to talk about deaths or about housing? Olivia Chow was given a chance to come here and we said this last week to her. She could be out here with people saying how she supports her caucus, a decade old caucus. But she's not here. If you look behind me, you can see. This is an empty office, not even a staff, not even a receptionist, nothing. People have to understand that the fight at Dundas and Sherburne, some people might see as a local fight. But we know that across poor communities in Toronto, that corporations like Kingset Capital, Lankes, Pemberton are buying up properties in poor neighborhoods and displacing people. We know that. We know in Parkdale, we know people there. We know people in Chinatown who are talking about properties being bought there. But not only is this a local battle, but this is a national battle. Because this crisis is a national crisis and it's a broad crisis. Many, many people that I know, friends and colleagues, you know, people on pensions, it's month to month. That's the story. Students, low-income people, people on welfare, they can barely hang on. And we're seeing the outcome of that. So I want to send Kingset Capital a quick message before we finish. And also Olivia Chow. Now just so you know who has Kingset Capital, John Love, the CEO. We should know who these people are. Bill O'Gard, David Vernon, and Rob Coomer, who is now their new CEO. These are the people who came in and hijacked the city's redevelopment process in March of 2022. Despite doing business with the city, they intervene. And now we're in this situation where the city doesn't have the money to buy it. They say we want more money. I want them to understand something. Whatever happens over the next three days, and this measures is given to the councillor and it's the Kingset Capital. And if Kingset Capital decides that they want to sell the property to another developer, the message is to that developer. They have to understand when Kingset Capital enters that territory, when they did that, they have to understand that they entered a minefield. They don't know what is going on there. And there's going to be a fight. There will be a war. Because there's no way, no way that we're going to allow Kingset Capital build that, no way that we're going to allow these councils to stay silent. And they have to choose. Olivia Chow has to choose. All those councils have to choose. Are they going to be with the people? People who are intimately connected, that can be, or with developers who are for profit like Kingset Capital? And we want that message to be clear. That whatever they vote, there's a fight. Because even if they vote no, you know, there's still a fight. We still need that property. So I want to thank everybody for coming here. It's wonderful to see people again who are intimately connected to Dundas and Sherburne. Some people who I just met today for the first time. And it's wonderful to see that. And that's it.
We now go to City Hall where councillor Chris Moyes presents the motion to amend the Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment application at 214 to 230 Sherburne Street.
214-230 Sherburne Street.
I have, yes, it's here without a recommendation.
I do have a motion on this item, amendment on this item.
You have a motion on that?
Yep, there's amendment on this item.
Are you moving the staff report?
I'm moving the amendment. There is amendment on that item.
It's here without a recommendation.
I'll count you to hold it.
Okay.
The following is the official motion presented at City Hall regarding the rezoning of 214-230 Sherburne Street by Kingset Capital. 1A, Motion to amend item moved by councillor Chris Moyes, harried that city council adopt the recommendations in the report, September 9th, 2024, from the Director, Community Planning, Toronto and East York District. 1, City Council amend the official plan for the lands at 214-230 Sherburne Street, substantially in accordance with the draft official plan amendment included as attachment 6 to this report. 2, City Council amend City of Toronto Zoning Bylaw 569-2013 for the lands at 214-230 Sherburne Street, substantially in accordance with the draft zoning bylaw amendment included as attachment 7 to this report. 3, City Council authorize the city solicitor to make such stylistic and technical changes to the draft official plan and zoning bylaw amendments as may be required. 4, Before introducing the necessary bills to city council for enactment, city council requires the owner to: A, provide confirmation satisfactory to the chief planner and executive director, City Planning, that the draft zoning bylaw amendment for the lands at two fourteen dash two thirty Sherburne Street, including any height exemptions, can form with Ontario Regulation ten slash twenty-four, zoning order, protection of public health and safety, Toronto hospital heliparts, and with City Bylaw fourteen thirty-two dash two thousand seventeen to regulate the use of lands in the vicinity of St. Michael's Hospital and the hospital for six children. One B, motion to amend item additional moved by councillor Chris Moyes, carried that: One, City Council request the executive director, corporate real estate management, in consultation with the Housing Secretariat and CRETO, to continue discussions with the owner of two fourteen dash two thirty Sherburne Street to find solutions that ensure an affordable housing component is included in the development, which could include acquiring the site should funding become available and subject to council approval. Two, City Council requests the mayor to consider allocating any community benefit charge funds collected from these developments towards the Dundas Sherburne Neighborhood Revitalization Plan through the annual budget process immediately following the payment of funds to the city.
Despite protests and speeches from community members urging city to reconsider, councillor Chris Moyes presented a motion at City Hall to amend the official plan and zoning bylaw, allowing Kingston to proceed with their project. The motion passed, granting Kingston permission to rezone the property. We reached out to Gaetan Herou and Wali Kogali for their opinions on the passing of this motion. And we reached out to councillor Moyes's office as well for his comments.
So my name is Gaetan Herou. I'm a member of two thirty Fight Back, which is an organization that's been fighting for more than a decade now around the two fourteen, two thirty Sherburne, wanting the city to buy the property from Kingston right now, but prior to that, from somebody else, from the Teninjas family. So and where we're at right now around that battle is we, things kind of come to a head. Well, it kind of started when the city staff put out a report. Kingston Capital had put their application in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. And it's just now, the final report from the planners came out and they're recommending approval of Kingston's application, which would pave the way for Kingston Capital to put a forty-six-story tower on the properties. And on September twenty-fifth, there was a number of deputations, I think seventeen deputations, that went to the Toronto East York Community Council, where people spoke passionately and opposed Kingston's application. And as a result of that, we thought it was going to be a slam dunk. It was just going to pass anyways. But Chris Moyes decided he was going to vote in favor of approval. But he decided instead to send the staff recommendation to City Council without recommendation. And what was interesting at that meeting is councillor Bravo and councillor Fletcher raised issue around the fact that in two thousand nineteen, Chris Martin had put a motion on the floor, which council approved, which was basically that the city would try and pursue the owners of the properties, who were the Teninjas at the time, Teninjas family. And bureaucrats would define the money either to buy it or expropriate. It never materialized. In March of two thousand twenty-two, Kingston Capital, a private equity company which has nineteen billion dollars in portfolio, bought the property. We've had a long fight over the last two years with Kingston around the fact that they did that. And now we're at a stage where the motion that Chris Martin had, which was a part of a five-year plan for Dundas and Sherburne in the downtown east, that after Kingston Capital bought the property, it disappeared from the five-year plan. And there's some serious question about why that disappeared, which we don't have answers to right now. And just a couple of days ago, the issue went to City Council. And in less than sixty seconds, Moyes put forth the motion to approve the city's report. And there was a show of hands about whether people were in favor of it or not. And like I said, less than sixty seconds, City Council approved the city's report, the staff report. So that, and the whole process was really, really hard to watch because half the councillors not raised their hands when they asked, you know, they're not paying attention, there's no recorded votes. We don't know who voted for it, who didn't, other than the chair, Nancy Hara, said it passed. So that's.
I just want to let you know that it's really disappointing that this motion was just passed in seconds, if not minutes. There was no discussion about the community demand for social housing or the motion that was approved at City Council in two thousand nineteen by then councillor Christine Wong-Tam and seconded by then councillor Anna Ballau. The complete neglect that a decision was made by City Council to designate two fourteen to two thirty Sherburne Street as the site for social housing and supporting housing for our neighbors who are living in the Sherburne-Dundas corridor community that's been plagued by the impact of poverty. So I want you to please raise awareness. Although this matter did pass City Council, we need to work together to address the housing crisis by demanding that for-profit developers stop funding our elected officials, our elected representatives, our city councillors. Stop contributing to the mayor's campaign. Stop contributing to our city councillors' campaigns. These for-profit greedy developers don't care about you and I. They care about making money at the end of the day. And I believe housing is a basic human right. And we cannot stand and allow for our families, our friends, our neighbors to live in encampments, to live on the streets, to live in our tunnels, while for-profit development that benefits the few continues in our city. The first thing we're going to be doing is we're going to issue a public statement condemning the decision that was made at council, highlighting the influence of greedy for-profit developers in our political process. We are going to be knocking on doors, canvassing, talking to as many of you as possible to get you involved, to get you in support of our appeals that we hope to take on at the various other levels of government to ensure that we have social housing, rent gear-to-income housing at two fourteen and two thirty Sherburne, but also here in Regent Park in phases four and five. What is going on is tragic, but it's also a test. And we will overcome this test collectively by ensuring that we stand for each other. And we stand for a much more livable city and a livable Regent Park, Moss Park, St. Jamestown, and making sure all the communities that are facing the pressures of gentrification are united in our pursuit for a fairer society where housing is treated as a basic human right instead of commodified as a financial tool or investment.
The following is a written response made by councillor Chris Moyes explaining his reasons for voting to pass the motion allowing Kingston Capital to rezone two fourteen, two thirty Sherburne Street. I want what many of the advocates want, which is for the city to acquire two fourteen, two thirty Sherburne Street. However, the system the city operates in does not give us the opportunity to do so. The simplest answer to why City Council approved the rezoning of two fourteen, two thirty Sherburne Street by Kingston Capital is that the expert professional staff that I and my council colleagues rely on to give us advice explained that approving the rezoning was the only reasonable outcome to allow the city to potentially acquire the lands for affordable housing. Expropriation in two thousand eighteen, prior to Kingston's application, was never a reasonable option, given the risks of blowing up the city's affordable housing budget. From a planning policy perspective, Kingston's application meets provincial and municipal policies as existed when they submitted in two thousand twenty-two. And that means the chances of the city defeating Kingston at the Ontario Land Tribunal were nonexistent. The only chance the city had to acquire the site in the future was to allow it to be rezoned so CRETO staff could properly value it, removing the risk and see if the price Kingston wants is worth the cost for the city and gives Toronto residents best value for their money. The city's focus is not on facilitating corporate profit through property flipping, but on ensuring that we maximize the limited dollars we have to secure affordable housing by practicing fiscal prudence. When advocates call for affordable housing at two fourteen, two thirty Sherburne Street, what they seem to be actually calling for is for systematic change in how we expropriate land, how we value land, and how we value housing as a public good rather than an investment. Unfortunately, that change is nested within a completely different level of government, the province. I truly wish there was a different outcome here, but it was the only reasonable outcome for the city to make.
Don't forget to like, comment, share, and subscribe to our YouTube channel. And please follow us on our social media platform. For more information, you can check out our website.